It's six o'clock. I'll call this regular city council meeting on Tuesday, November 24th to order. If you're a riot, we'll have an indication. All of that.
Love to follow the Lord. Just thank you for today. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us, Father. We just ask that you just watch over and protect us, Lord. With us tonight, where as we delve into the city's business, Lord, just give us good wisdom and good decision makings, Lord, as we tend to the city's business. Father, we just thank you for all that you've given us, Lord. And we just thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, which is the name we pray.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible) from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. Janine, is there any citizen public comments?
No, sir.
Mitch, any introduction of new employees? No. Next, we will consider approving minutes of October 27th and November 2nd and November 10th. If there are no additions or corrections, can we get a motion to approve the minutes addressed?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 27th to November 2nd. No matter what.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider approving monthly departmental reports. If you have a question, please identify on page.
I have a question on page 18. It shows that we're billing for grass fires to the county, but we don't bill for motor vehicle accidents. Anybody know why?
Chief.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
It shows that we bill for the grass fires, but we don't bill for motor vehicle accidents to the county.
Right.
Any reason why we don't?
That's the contract that they made with the county years ago. It's never been changed or revised. That's the only answer I can give you. My preference would be to bill them for them.
Yeah, if we were on fire or something, we'd need to get paid.
That's right. And that was what you discussed last meeting?
Yes.
Was that you're in talks to redo that before this next year? Any other questions? There are no other questions. Can we get a motion to approve the monthly departmental reports?
I'll make a motion to approve the departmental reports.
Motion's been made by Buddy, seconded by Kenny, that we approve the monthly departmental reports. Are there any other questions or comments? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider approving October expenses. Mitch?
Yeah. I see.
Is that really expensive?
No, it's just a.
Check it out.
Pull that out and separate out and have that.
Please.
Page 33, 46, Paul. Check those two check register.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't point that out. Separated, checked out. Did not.
Okay. I just went through it.
This is normally on our departmental reports, but it's been broken out separately. So there's no questions on the check register? Can we get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the expenses for October.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider approving the First Amendment of wholesale water sales contract with Sunnydale Water Supply Corporation. Mitch?
Mary Nimmel there, this comparison stuff. This is actually a first of two five-year extensions that are the original contract. So this is a contract amendment to the original contract and very few changes in there. I provided Yola with a copy of this and has a date of January 1st going to go through the stats. So we'll give them notice if we approve this amendment. And Nell needed approval to have everything back from city issues. They kind of expect an increase in the length and translate to the same as what we have here in town to line up. All we know that really changes is to require annual certification of back book of manner for the system and require all back book of manner in town that have to take. That's a TCT requirement. So we look at the contract, they have their back book of manner certified every year. That's really, really value up and have a lot to add to that.
Questions or discussion on that? This just gets their rates up with the current rates that they charge the rest of the community and out of town users. Their contract goes up or down?
Yes. Yeah, it comes up January 1st.
We'll see a little bit of an increase in their bill, but not substantial. Any other questions? If not, can we get a motion to approve the amendment?
I make the motion to approve the First Amendment of the wholesale water contract with Sunnydale.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider approving agreement with Polk Truck Wash for utilities.
Just finally got word back from Craig Welch that's with, representing Holstein Supply Company, the contractor, the owner, Emilio, up in Dalhart. They've looked at the contract and didn't have any big issues with it. So I hate that I couldn't whip this out when the agenda went out, but we just now have it. This is, the big thing on this is the acceptance of waste. And Mike Neighbors is here, he could probably answer some questions that I can't regarding the waste stream that we anticipate getting from him. There's no dangerous constituents. There's some diluting that would have to happen, some dilution with waste so that it will be considered normal according to our code ordinances. And we've had some tests run and things like that on samples from some of their other facilities. And basically, this is a truck wash, maybe washing out various trucks. And milk is one of the things we have to be very careful of to make sure we're not going to destroy our bogs and stuff in our wastewater ponds and just kind of disrupt our plant. So there's some items in this contract that will protect us and allow us to make sure that we're getting normal wastewater from them. Mike, is that, I don't know if I left anything out that you think that?
I don't think so. We've got it per week. We can do spot samples. I had him send to our lab of our choice from Kansas what they were putting out. It's a little high in pH and BOD. So we'll have them dilute that. But after, I had a long conversation, well, several conversations with TCEQ, and I furnished them a copy of our industrial waste ordinance, our ordinance. And TCEQ's direction on that was to have them get the permits and everything for the pretreatment or the dilution, go through TCEQ. Me still be able to do my spot checks, but them send us test results every 14 days. So that's, that's kind of the way we chose to go. That way the liability's all on them. I can very quickly turn their stream off if they're getting any bad stuff before it hurts our ponds. And we'll be, we'll be spot checking it to be sure. Because it's, they said it was going to be about 50,000 gallons a day that would come to our ponds. I can easily handle that at the ponds. If they send me something a little hot, I can handle that. Not on a steady basis.
Is 50,000 gallons a day, does that be their normal consumption too?
Yes. Well, their consumption would be a little more than that because the 50,000 is only on the outside of the truck wash, the washing of the inside of the tanks to get the milk and sanitizing that. Their office, however much, however many people they have working there, that'd be on top of that 50.
So is there anything in place for like a penalty if they're in violation of this or dealing with their waste concentrations if they're?
No, we didn't put in a, in any kind of a, I think the term would be a surcharge. And no, we didn't, we don't, we don't want a surcharge because we don't want to deal with anything other than normal level.
I mean, what's that going to, well, I guess what I was getting at, I mean, if for some reason we do get some, some bad, bad waste and stuff like that, who's that, whose responsibility is that going to fall on? Is that going to come back and hurt us or is it going to hurt them? Or how's that, how's that part that's going to work?
If I let it go on.
As soon as it gets by, yeah, it's going to hurt us.
Affects my ponds to the point that we're not in compliance, it will affect us. I will find it before that happens. And with them going through TCEQ, TCEQ is the middle runner that will be checking that as well because we're going to be permitted through TCEQ.
So I mean, if, that's all fine. I guess what I'm trying to get at is if that were the case and we know that they were the culprit of that, then TCEQ would go to them instead of coming to us and.
Yes, sir.
We got, I mean, we're safe.
And you can shut them off if they're.
Right. Oh, yeah. Man, if I go out there and take a grab sample and it's high in pH or, I'll turn them off. I'll make them stop.
So what would that water do? I mean, then, I mean, you shut them off and just, you know, I mean, what happens? I mean, they're, they're in the water then, how long do we have to get?
Well, the good thing about it, there's no dangerous constituents. I mean, it's, it's just the dilution level. And, you know, we could dilute it if we had to on down the line or something, but the main thing is, you know, we're not getting any heavy metals or anything like that that are going to really be a problem. So, so it's more along the line of the dilution. And all of these issues with pH or BOD can be solved with dilution. And, you know, a lot of that's going to be pretty easy to check because they're going to use more water to dilute it. So that's going to be a real indicator out there if they're not using enough water and diluting their wastewater. So, you know, it's, it's something we have to watch and keep an eye on. You know, with any other customer we have, we have to make sure they're not going to send us something that's going to cause us some problems down the line.
And it's going through an existing wastewater?
Now, they're going to have to bore under US, I mean, FM 54 for water and sewer. That's going to be a big cost to them. But in this contract, we require them to have a professional engineer provide some plans, will approve the plans. Then they actually will put their money in escrow and so we can make sure that they'll have the money in the bank to do the plan they're going to do. We don't want them to get halfway finished and run out of money. So that's part of the stuff built in this contract where they have to do those things. This also has a, an annexation thing where they're agreeing that it's beneficial for them to be annexed, that we should someday be able to and decide to annex. And right now, they'll touch our city limits. So we couldn't just quite annex them unless we had a big annexation thing. And, I mean, that, that's as good as the paper trip and all. So we don't know how that'll work out, but for now, we have a, that's in contract.
Brian's recommendation was to approve this contract in the framework, but, you know, it's contingent, they've got to get us some engineering estimate and engineering plans back. So once they get us some numbers and review, we'll bring this back to approve in the future. But this lets them know that, hey, we're, we're willing to go forward with an agreement such as this, give us some numbers, you know, subject to them giving us what we're requiring to, and then we'll come back and approve it.
What I'd ask is that you approve the contract with the stipulation that are contingent upon getting the final legal review and engineering and cost estimates. And I think that will give our, Holstein will give them the marching orders to spend some money on engineering and get ready for us to approve. But we just want to give some kind of a nod saying, yeah, and as long as they do certain things to meet our requirements.
You said final contingent upon the final legal engineering and cost estimates?
And cost estimates. Those are the things that our attorney recommended that we hinge approve law on. And he just approved it with a contingent upon final legal review, engineering and cost estimates.
That's very payware, all the costs, but the reason we need that is to put that in because they're going to have to escrow that. Yeah.
Now, questions whether or not we should do an escrow, but after Brian discussed it with me quite a while, I see his point. It's just extra assurance that we can, that they're going to finish the project.
Right. Right. Any other questions? Do you have any word for the motion? Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion then. We need to enter an improvement agreement on Holstein Truck Wash for utilities contingent upon final legal review, engineering and cost estimates.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Buddy. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider an approved preliminary plans for downtown town revitalization grant. Mitch?
There's really no formal approval of the plans required. I wouldn't give them a chance for you to look at it before they start, you know, some serious engineering on this thing. So what we've got is a draft plan, we set plans, they're about 95% complete. And also, I ran a, I had a deal in the paper, I think it was on the front page, to show one of the blocks, the block between the PD and the library. And wanted to, you got a chance to direct me on changes you might see that are coming up on this thing to, to keep us from having to redo a bunch of work on something that takes time. You know, we don't want to be surprises for the public in, you know, what we're working on here. Basically, the, you know, main thrust of this thing is to work on what we call bump outs. So the, it's called the aggregate block, circular sometimes, different shaped features that have different things on them, from seating areas to awnings. And a lot of them are just busted up and, you know, they just look tired. And so what this does is have a concrete ribbon around them. They will, they'll be busted out and then they put a concrete ribbon around them and then they'll have papers, probably a ready style paper to kind of match some existing stuff best we can. And they'll kind of line up with, you know, the last project we did was mainly drainage. And we got those drainage crates redone and got rid of the old rusty, pleated covers that were on them and rebuilt those things. So this will kind of build off of those a little bit and then they'll be kind of make that look nicer. Also got some decorative taller lighting. We're not going to take out the existing overhead lights. We're just going to add these shorter decorative lights and best we can. I don't know how far we're going to go. A lot of this stuff depends on the bids and how, how good a bid we get to get on this. And then that section between the PD and the library, we'll have a turnaround and this is probably the best picture we'd be on page 91.
91.
Yeah, I think that's one of them. Been talking with the county all along. County judge has had some plans, just kind of on the back burner for many years. And we first talked about closing the whole lot, but due to the need for some parking spots and stuff like that, we've kind of modified that into a turnaround for police department and some handicap parking. Net difference, maybe one parking spot as opposed to actual spots, but quite a bit more staging area for the police department when they, when they need to, to drop off somebody at the main entrance of the fire department, I mean, police department. That's the big thing. We don't have any plans yet in concrete for the park area to the, to the south side of that block, but in the talks with, with the county judge and we're going to put in the framework to do some of this stuff later. I think probably a gazebo or something like that was the general idea of something to go in that little park area. And it's kind of what we've got on that block. We're closing off that entrance to the, to the library from off of that Phelps Street. And it's really kind of a bad access anyway. And we could still keep that open, but, you know, that's a modification we could make as we get into the project a little further. Right now, I haven't had anybody that's had a 2200 short cricket access road open into the library. Lots of handicap ramps and stuff, which is the main thrust of this grant. The main thing that they want to do is provide more handicap and that's really the reason for the grants in the first place. So we have to do, you know, a good job with those and where we can. Open questions? You might have any questions?
When will this completion? When will this all work take place?
At this rate, probably about the year 23rd. No, it's going to have to happen pretty soon because, you know, we're pushing the time limit on the grant and we should be out to bid before the end of the year and, and probably January or we'll be doing out of construction in the first part of January. I mean, we're at a point now where they just have to do some detail and get it finished up on the design. And these just take such a long time in the plan.
If there's no questions, can we approve the preliminary plans for the downtown revitalization grant?
I make a motion to approve the preliminary plans for the downtown revitalization grant.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Buddy. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider approving sale for trust properties in C L Littlefield from Texas Community Groups, property ID 19906 and R 19907 at 605 East Fourth Street and 607 East Fourth Street. Winning bidder is Bryant Investments, West Texas LLC, amount of $1,501. We have that tax deed and property description there. Our understanding is they're going to fix that house up for some employee housing?
Yeah, they'll pay us to fix it up right now. When we seize it, I mean, I couldn't even get by giving a bid to clean up it so bad, but they were willing to tackle it. I said, I'm going to do it. It's got requirements in the contract. They have to have it, get it up to code and sort of.
And is there another, your, the second property is?
It's all in one. It's just two lots.
Two lots.
It's a house and then the lot is finished in.
Right. Motion to approve that tax sale.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of trust properties and C L Littlefield Investments.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Michael. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider an improvement in our local government cooperation contract for administration services for grants administration of the Texas Parks and Wildlife for construction of the fire center. Mitch, update?
Yeah, I've got a kind of update on the grant situation. We did get a response through our US Congressman and a lot of people didn't look at it like I did. I, they said, if we go forward, it could prevent us from getting the grant money, which I take that as a, as a possibility of still using it. So it doesn't really cost us any extra at this point or delay us any to go ahead and do this contract for administration of the grant. But that can help us stay within the certain requirements during, while we start construction on the street. And probably will give us a little bit of, a bit of advantage when we do get to a point where they start trying to decide whether to give us the money or not. And we don't want to delay the project even one half. So right now, this contract shouldn't cost us much at all. And because of rock, not really lots, what they would be doing right now. But once we get going on it, if we do get the grant money, I mean, this kind of hedges our bet, you know, and helps us to, to have a better chance of being able to use this grant money. I mean, right now, the answer's no, but in this, in this email, it says, could prevent you from using the money. And I think that is kind of a, a little bit of an open door to get our foot in, to just still use that $750,000. So I recommend that we go ahead and do the contract.
Well, you know, we were talking about doing phase one and phase two and phase three. Couldn't we use that grant money for maybe phase two or phase three?
Well, really, the only thing they issued or they approved the grant for is first one. And we could change that to something else. And we could change that to something else, but that's a good point. And one of the tactics that could be used to try to help us use that money is to, to, uh, maybe have part of this construction, uh, not where we can stage it at this point, but have it not starting until the contract is signed, which it could very well be enough of that coming on later in the project. And Dan Reese is, uh, the director of Parks, uh, Division, and...
So, we bonded out the entire amount of construction, and so if we get the grant, we would be able to save seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from the money we already have sitting in, in the money. That could be, originally was discussed as prepaying principal on the bond, or if it's y'all's will, it could start another phase. But if we get the grant, we'll have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that we either need to pay back or use for additional construction.
By the way, we usually have a trick in the book to use this money to suggest from having to use bond money to do it, but we've already, the old mount's been, been approved and we have the money in the bank to do it.
If not, can we get a motion to approve in our local agreement contract?
I make the motion we approve the interlocal agreement contract, cooperation contract for administration services for the grant administration of the grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife.
I'll second that. Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider an approved engineer selection for the water well development, Mitch.
Uh, we've been doing a lot of discussing and visiting with different engineers, uh, and our well driller that we've been talking to. And we're to a point now where we need to go forward with some, uh, professional design work and we have to have an engineer, uh, state law. Now, a little different process to select an engineer on this because there's no, there's no federal grant or state grant money involved with this, so, uh, we can just pick an engineer according to their qualifications. Can't pick them according to the price they would charge us to do the engineering that would be against the law. So, we've got two engineers who've been visiting, uh, one is Park Hill, we use for multiple things to do now. And there's also, uh, Chess Parkill, which I've known him for a long time. Uh, my neighbors has visited with, uh, Chess on it and we've kind of weighed out some estimates. They both did kind of a cost analysis on this thing and kind of looking it out for more than just when you're looking at, trying to compare those two. But one thing we do know is it's going to be around five hundred thousand dollars to do two wells and, and develop them. They have, you know, turnkey, turnkey project for the whole thing. So, uh, we do need, I, I would like for you to give us direction on which we can use, uh, Park Hill, they are always good for us and, you know, I'm using them. And our well driller, uh, we've been talking to is, uh, down in Seminole and, uh, has some local experience here. And, uh, he recommended, uh, talking to Carthel Engineering, Chess Carthel. And, uh, says they, they could save us some money on the project. And, you know, when we take five hundred thousand dollars, I think after we do some value engineering and maybe do some of the work ourselves on the roads and things like that, and, you know, talk with the REA and stuff, we can, uh, probably whittle down some of the costs and get this down some. Which this is a project that, you know, a development corporation has agreed to, to fund, uh, after the contract's been worked out with the mill plant to justify the, the job retention with this project and, you know, providing the water for the future for that, of the mill plant and, you know, all our other uses. So, um, kind of long story short, I mean, we're happy with either one. And Mike's here, y'all can ask him some questions. We've both been kind of working at this thing and, and looking at numbers and talking to drillers and engineering and, uh, doing some due diligence on the, on the property and, uh, it's, I mean, we're lucky we've got a lot of water rights and it's going to be easy to, to develop. So, uh, we just want to get going on it and get your engineering plans in front of the TCQ for their approval. Let's use a text a little while, so this is just kind of moving forward with the project y'all discussed.
Mike has Carthel had done some well drilling work before, correct?
Yes, sir. He has.
And that drillers really like working with him. So, you're needing us to select an engineer tonight?
I mean, we're, we're happy with either one, just whatever y'all's got feeling about it.
So, your recommendation's Carthel, though, for this project?
Yes.
Two choices before you, Parks Hill Smith and Cooper and Carthel Engineering, recommendations for Carthel Engineering Services. There a motion to approve an engineer selection for the water?
I'll go ahead, excuse me, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve, uh, Carthel Engineering Services for, uh, engineer for the water well development.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Michael. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will discuss and consider approval of the resolution authorizing the redemption of the city's general obligation, taxable refunding bonds of series two thousand sixteen, and approving all instruments and procedures related there to, uh, Andrew, would you give a day on this, please?
Uh, this will be the payoff of the TCC CBCF, the Texas Civil Commitment Center, Bill Clayton Facility, formerly known as the VCDC, the Bill Clayton Defense Center. Um, so this is the biggest bond that the city's had in recent years, but we've made an early payment roughly two years ago. Um, I believe the early payment we'd made back then was roughly three point four million dollars. We actually made it alongside a payment, so the principal that we knocked down at one time was actually like three point nine million dollars. Right now on our books, the principal's about, is, uh, is two point four million dollars, and that'll be what will pay off. Um, there'll be some interest associated with it, a little under sixty-seven thousand dollars worth of interest. And there'll probably be some minor fees, um, going through with that early payment, or the early payoff, but, uh, it should save us roughly, um, a hundred, between a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand dollars in interest, I guess, just for this one. Of course, the previous, uh, early payment saved us like one point four million dollars in interest. Um, but it'll, we'll be done with it.
This is exciting news. We've been working for this, towards this for five years. Um, this pays off the facility nine years early. Originally, thirty years was what the city was slated to pay for this prison with. We made that big principal, additional principal payment two years ago, getting set up for this point, so the important thing to know is we saved the city a million and a half dollars on just prepaying this note early and interest savings and then knocking down the money we saved when we refinanced them five or six years ago at a better rate. So, this, it's an awesome thing. We've been working towards this. I want to thank all the department heads that have kept, uh, their budgets and expenses in line and kept working with, on razor pen, uh, budgets to be able to allow us to bank all that revenue from the city or the facility to make this prepayment. It's a big deal for the city. It closes that chapter in our history with the prison, and so it is now going to be paid for it as it moves forward. And, uh, if it goes empty again, we hope it doesn't. There's a lot of jobs out there and it's a great thing for the community. And, uh, we hope that it'll stay in operation for many more years, but if it does, was to go dormant, it's not going to make us bleed like it did last time. So, um, it's a great, it's a huge deal. It's what we've been working for, for years. I want to thank the council and Andrew for, Mitch for sticking to this plan over the years, so it's what we've been working for. Wish we had a copy of the bond, we could light on fire in the middle of the floor.
Well, before we do that, I'd like to make the motion that we, uh, consider an approval of the resolution authorizing the redemption of the city's general obligation, taxable refunding bond series twenty sixteen, and approving all instruments and procedures related there to. Pay this, pay this escrow off.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Michael, uh, that we prepaid that bond. Any further discussion? Keep in mind, our total indebtedness for the city well with the pool now, but prior to the pool bond, would be less than a million dollars, is next, correct?
Yeah, all, all we really have left is, is, uh, the two thousand six series, which was the Highway eighty-four project, and it's got about eight hundred thousand dollars on it right now, uh, principal.
Quite a difference in the last few years. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will discuss and consider approval of the contract renewal from municipal financial advisory services, Mitch.
Um, this is something that our, uh, partners advisors, his, uh, municipal advisors have presented to us, uh, came to review it, and Brian said they didn't see the problem of the extension. And I'd like to do an extension of this contract. Uh, no, it is a, I think thirty-eight, thirty day out on it. We want to terminate it, so it is thirty day, I think, but it, it ties in for about thirty-two, little, two years. The, the steeple is a, good cap.
Same guy who's been using six or seven here. I entertain a motion to approve this renewal of this contract for financial value.
I'll make a motion. We, we give this contract for financial advisory services.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Any further discussion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Your turn.